It's now 7:20. I'd like to open the public hearing to consider the Village of Suffering acquiring a parcel of real property located at 37 Washington Avenue. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hagan, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Public hearing is open. So at this time, I'd like to make a brief statement in regards to this public hearing. Today, the Village Board, the Village of Suffering Board of Trustees will be considering a series of resolutions in connection with the proposed purchase by the Village of approximately 1.87-acre parcel containing a vacant warehouse building and parking lot previously occupied by Avon at 37 Washington Avenue. The property is adjacent to the Village's community center and the municipal parking lots. The Village has negotiated a purchase price of $2,850,000, which we financed through the authorization of $3 million in bonds, with the additional money being used for environmental due diligence, attorney's fees, title search, survey, and costs related to the acquisition of the property. Considering that this is a strategic acquisition for the Village of Suffering, the public will be provided the opportunity to comment this evening. The Board is in agreement that this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for the Village of Suffering. The property located in the downtown area of the Village is strategic due to its ample parking, which is key to continued redevelopment of our Village. Securing this property now for municipal purposes allows for the Village to ensure the property is available for a variety of potential municipal uses and potential opportunities for future economic development. The property is also key, is in close proximity to the Village's community center, Village Hall, and two firehouses. My fellow Board members and I have spent a significant amount of time considering acquiring this property and want to ensure that it is realized to its fullest potential. All believe this is a wise investment of the Village's taxpayers' dollars. We also recognize that the revenue from parking should, should it be turned into a municipal parking lot, will help offset the annual cost of borrowing. The Village's significantly improved financial condition and upgraded bond rating along with low interest rates make this a good time and opportunity for the Village to finance the acquisition of this property. As part of this negotiation, Avon has agreed to continue paying a share of the pilot agreement associated with this property to all of the other taxing jurisdictions, and the Village has agreed, as it will be, the property owner to waive its share. Thus, all other jurisdictions, including the school district, are guaranteed to continue to receive the pilot payment associated with the property for the next five years. This Board believes the acquisition of this property will encourage planned and responsible development in our community, and I thank the Board members for sharing the vision, my vision, of Suffering's future. So at this time, we have Mr. Nick Ward Willis, who will be presenting a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation. Kathy, if you could help me out with the screen and the PowerPoint. And we will answer questions after the PowerPoint presentation. If you would come up, state your name and address, and you will be limited to a four-minute period of speaking, and afterwards, follow-up questions. Thank you.
I've never had a time limit set, and I think it's criminal to set a time limit. There hasn't been a time limit left in the Village Board meeting yet, okay? I'm gonna go up there, if you want to stop me, you're gonna stop me. I think you're wrong. I think it's criminal behavior, and it should start now.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, if I can mention, and I'm sure Ralph would say this is why, so I apologize to Ralph. The municipality board has the ability to regulate how much time speakers have, as long as it's announced in advance, as you've done here. You're certainly within your rights to do so, to establish rules of procedure, notwithstanding what the gentleman said. What I'm going to do tonight is set forth a little background on the Village's acquisition and interest in this property. I've had a number of discussions with the Village Board in executive session because it's being the discussion of real property, and I thank the Board for the difficult questions that's asked of us, that has helped the process and the contract negotiations. I know Avon is here, and I'm not gonna...
Mike, please.
I'm sorry, you can't hear me? Thank you, I appreciate the feedback, good to know. So, my name is Nick Ward Willis with Keenan Bean, the Village Attorney. I'm going to provide you tonight with a little overview of the Village's interest in this property and the process. Just waiting for the PowerPoint to load. While we're waiting, the... There are five resolutions before the Board tonight that need to be considered. One is the secret resolution, the State Environment Quality Review Act. Before the city, the Village can purchase the property... Before the Village can purchase the property or issue, go out to bonding, it needs to go through the State Environment Quality Review Act, so in the agenda packet was an environmental assessment form. This particular action does not have a significant adverse environmental impact because it's already a developed property, and at this time, there's no proposed development. It's going to remain in its current condition. The second resolution before the Board is to approve the contract of sale for the $3.85 million, and subject to the form and substance being reviewed by our office as to the contract of sale. The third resolution is to approve the issuance of $3 million worth of bonds, which is subject to a permissive referendum. The fourth resolution is to modify the pilot agreement that the Village and other agencies have entered into with Avon with respect to this property, just the 37 Washington Avenue property. The purpose of the pilot modification, it's really just two points. It's one, to release this parcel from the pilot agreement so that it can be sold by Avon to the Village. And the second is to commit Avon to continue, even though that property is out of the pilot program, to commit Avon to continue making tax payments for the life of the pilot agreement for the next five years, so that the taxing jurisdictions, the school, the county, and the town, do not lose their tax dollars. Of course, as the Village is acquiring the property, Avon's not going to pay taxes to the Village. And the fifth resolution before the Village Board of Trustees tonight is a resolution to authorize the Village to retain an environmental firm to do environmental due diligence.
Okay. Did we get the PowerPoint on?
It's almost up on the screen. Looks like it's raining.
All right, let's try to get the PowerPoint on the screen.
Yep, so I can continue while we're doing that.
Okay.
I think, you know, many of you may have been here when Avon presented to the Village Board several weeks ago as to why it was asking the Village and the other taxing jurisdictions to modify the pilot agreement. Avon is going through some unique economic times, there are negotiations with Natural Brazil, you've read about it in newspapers, for the purchase of Avon products. These Avon and Suffering is comprised of, you know, three parcels, non-contiguous parcels, one on the railroad track, which is just parked, the main research and development property, and then the Nail and Amble Building, which Avon purchased in the 1970s. Avon is seeking to modify the pilot agreement to allow for the sale and for that closing to occur by the end of this year. So the current pilot agreement was entered into in September of 2003, and it expires in the Village's fiscal year, ending May 31st, 2025, so in approximately five years. Avon has proposed that as part of this deal, the pilot agreement would be amended that would allow the sale of the property, and any potential buyer would use it for uses, could use it for uses outlined in the central business zone, scheduled general use requirements for that district. It should be noted that in less than five years, upon expiration of the pilot agreement, Avon, or whomever purchases Avon, if that occurs, could sell the property for any uses outlined in the central business zone district. So at some point in time, even if the pilot agreement were not modified, Avon would have the ability to sell the property. So in fact, what the Village would be allowing is for that property to be sold sooner than it would otherwise be. Avon also has the ability under the pilot agreement to break the pilot agreement at any time and sell the property. However, that would be a financial penalty and would require Avon to pay the county and the other tax-during jurisdictions an amount equal to the tax benefit Avon receives under the pilot agreement. So Avon is instead seeking to have the agreement modified. If you're able to look at my PowerPoint presentation at this point, you'd see an image of the property, but I think everyone is familiar with 37 Washington Street and why it's in a strategic location for the Village, adjacent to the recreation center, near the firehouse, off of the main street, and near an existing municipal parking lot. It's currently in the central business district, which permits a variety of uses, commercial, for-profit, nonprofit, places of worship, banks, retail stores, indoor theaters, and a variety of retail store uses. So, let me talk for a moment about the vision, economic development in the Village of Suffering. So as the Mayor mentioned, this property presents the Village with an opportunity to create not just additional parking, but other municipal uses, or if not needed for a municipal purpose, the potential to sell a portion of a property to spur economic development in the downtown. And this would allow the Village to be positioned for the future and in attracting business and residential development projects through transit-oriented developments such as the Sheldon. And it's a trend in the Hudson Valley that people are returning to villages, people are returning to their downtown areas. Uh-huh, we're there. So now we just need to go to the currency. There we go, thank you.
Maybe we should start over here.
Oh, then finish.
That's my lovely PowerPoint slide with a picture of the property. The existing municipal lot is in red, and the Avon Nail and Amble Building is in green. Those are just the slides talking about the general uses that I mentioned were applicable within that zoning district where the property is located. And the members of the Board have a copy of my PowerPoint presentation, so I know it's not a double-sided screen, but you can follow along. So I'm talking about economic development in the Village, and as I was mentioning, the Village sees the potential and the need for parking in that area. Parking is difficult, there's always a need for parking, and this opportunity doesn't come along that often, so the Village sees this as being a key point in the future into continuing the growth to get residents, to patronize the shops, and also to get more residents in the Village that will increase the tax ratables. And so it's not just spending money to buy a parking lot, it's all the other benefits that come with it, everything that this parking lot would support and the ability to continue growth in the Village. Transit-oriented development, residential options are in demand, but despite the green movement, despite climate change, people still want cars. They want to go, we don't have the infrastructure out in there, people want vehicles, so there's still a need for parking. As an example, I'm advised the Sheldon is at, as you can see, 80% capacity with anticipation for all units to be filled by the end of this year, and the estimated cars per unit was 1.5, but it actually appears to be more like two cars per unit. And the Sheldon has requested but not received additional 24-hour parking permits, and the reason they haven't received them is because of the lack of space. The Village doesn't have those additional permits to make available for them. Additionally, interestingly enough, after the Sheldon opened, the request for overnight parking permits has also increased. Again, just demonstrating there's a need for parking, additional parking. Next slide is that in 2018, the Village had a parking study done as part of its economic development sustainability study, and the study concluded that Suffering lacked the necessary parking to sustain economic development with its current parking resources at or near capacity. Again, supporting the Village's belief that additional parking is needed. Additionally, the Village, the Mayor can speak to this as well, has, receives inquiries from projects that are on the drawing board. People are interested in furthering residential development in the Village. So it's not just those that are before the planning board, not those just under construction, but those that are going to queue up and be in the pipeline. And the Village sees that there is continued growth in the Village and the potential for more growth to continue in the years ahead, and this parcel fits within the key resource. So let's focus for a moment, I keep mentioning parking, so what are the current Village parking locations? You're more familiar with them than I am, up on the screen, 117 spaces at the train station, there's Lot A with 101, Lot B and Lot F are your two largest, at 205 and 212, and I'm advised by the Village offices that, for example, Lot B with 205 units, the third one down, is at capacity, permits are no longer being issued, there are 208 merchant permits issued, daily permits are sold when available, and it's subject to three hours parking for shopping. Likewise, Lot F is near at capacity with only annual, monthly, or daily permits being issued, and a need for additional parking. Likewise, Lot D has 82 spaces, approximately 25 spaces are contracted for the bus commuter parking, and then there's overnight parking and trailhead parking permitted there as well. So the Village, before going down this path, has examined what are the current parking demands and how are they being satisfied? And it's the Village's belief that parking is at or near capacity in a number of these lots, and there's a need for more parking. So we've also mentioned that if it's going to be used for parking, there's a potential revenue opportunity here as well. So if 40% of a property were used for additional parking, that would add approximately 100 additional spaces available for residents, merchants, shoppers, and commuters. So just looking at it by the current permit types that the Village offers, the daily and merchant permit, the monthly permit, the annual permit, overnight permits, and the 24-hour, seven-day required annual permits, it's estimated that those additional 100 parking spaces would bring in approximately $63,000 in additional revenue for the Village. So what does the acquisition of 37 Washington mean for economic development? Are you for me to repeat this? It provides additional parking that's going to accommodate increased rail and bus ridership. It's going to accommodate additional commercial activities, restaurant growth, entertainment uses, and special events. It also provides additional parking resources to enable transit-oriented development projects, economic development projects, and the growth of the Village's merchant community. So 37 Washington Avenue provides the Village the opportunity to acquire land in a strategically located parking lot, along with the potential opportunity for the Village, if it's not all needed for parking, or if it's not needed for the potential of a municipal building use, whether it's an emergency services, recreation center, whatever the case may be, as the Village explores a number of, variety of potential municipal uses, that property could also be sold to spur, a portion of the property to spur economic development in the downtown, given its critical location. So the Village negotiated a purchase price of $2,850,000. It secured an appraisal, as is required to do so, then has negotiated a purchase price with Avon. To finance the purchase, the Village proposes to issue $3 million in bonds. It's to be noted, Avon did receive other offers from other qualified buyers, but Avon negotiated with the Village in good faith, and we reached a deal, and thank you. So the Village's purchase of this property is subject to the resolutions that I mentioned, that this Board needs to adopt, those five resolutions. It's also subject to the pilot agreement being modified by the school district, the county IDA, the county and the town, and I apologize, the county IDA has already approved the modification several, about three, two to three months ago, the county IDA, they were the first ones to approve the modification, as they currently hold the title of the property, they would have to convey it. So the concept of Avon modifying the pilot agreement to permit a portion to be sold has already been approved by one of the governmental authorities, the Rockland County IDA. And so in summary, going through this, it's believed that the acquisition of a property, it is a good and fair value, the terms are fair to the Village, it will support planned growth and development in the Village, it will provide additional parking resources for the growing residential and merchant community, it will support continued economic development in the downtown area, and it also offers the Village the opportunity to spur additional economic development, potentially by selling a portion should it not be needed for economic development, for municipal purposes in the near future. So Mayor, that's sort of my summary, I'm happy to answer questions now from the Board of the public, or open up the public comment portion.
Yes, I would like to open up the public comment portion at this time, and I would like to indicate that anyone that wishes to speak now, step up to the podium, state your name and address, and present. Yes, we can turn off the PowerPoint presentation and move the laptop, please.
Is this on? Hi, I'm Jana Kaplan, I live at Oakdale Manor. Hello. And Mike, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Good. I'm Jana Kaplan, I live at Oakdale Manor, and my question is about the building that is coming with the parking lot. Is that going to be looked at, is it going to be torn down, will it become stores, is it going to be apartment buildings? Like, what is the plan for that and the longevity of this? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are those all your questions?
That's a question.
Okay.
Should I answer?
No, 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 you're good. No, no, I just wanted to make sure, that's all. Thank you.
Would you like me to answer that question?
Yes, Mr. Willis, please.
Good, thank you. So the factory building is about 33,000 square feet, excuse my, fighting my cold. The Village hasn't determined how that would be, the building would be used. It would be examined to see, could it be used for either village offices or perhaps warehouse and storage purposes in the short term? There's no intention at this point to tear it down. It would have to be examined as to how it would meet a general municipal purpose in the near future, or if not a general purpose, then would it be sold off with the main portion being kept as a parking lot? So that would be the answer to Ms. Hopper's question.
Next speaker.
I think I'm the only person here in the room tonight who actually voted for the Avon pilot. Yeah, sure, excuse me. I have concerns about the building, too. I think that if there was, there's a sale in the building that are attorney here, it's Washington Avenue.
Thank you.
That's okay. I've been around here 78 years, I've known that. I was concerned, as I said, about the building, and I think that a part of the, put it in the sale that Avon, I'm sure they'll be glad to do it, because they know it's a safe building, would guarantee that the building would be safe, and also guarantee that if, you know, engineering study or any type of environmental study happened, that Avon would take the responsibility of cleaning it up. I mean, this place was, probably saw every chemical in the periodic table at one time or another, so what's happened to it, I don't know. I also don't think, you know, Mr. Albert was quoted in the paper saying, you know, what about this building? To me, this is the worst part of the whole deal. What do we need this building for? What does anybody need this building for? It looks like we're buying, you know, something that we don't need, and I could very well see, to a certain extent, you know, buying the parking area, although, you know, what I read in the business papers is retail outlets closing all the time, Sears, Macy's, you name it, and small places too, all over the United States. So I don't know about, you know, the need for this parking, and, but I'm really concerned about the building. And I don't think it's a good idea to buy that building, I think getting the parking might make a lot of sense, but I think Avon wants us to take this building off their hands, that's why I say it. Thank you very much for your time.
Please step up and state your name and address.
Hello, I'm Eva Nordhauser, 116 Bonner West, Suffering. And, okay, I just have a few questions. Basically, I want to say, I'm not opposed to the idea of purchasing the property, but there are several questions that are raised. Actually, tonight, when you talked about parking, I'm a little confused. How would buying parking on Washington help people at the Sheldon? You know, I don't see that solving their problem, I don't see it solving the problems of anybody who takes the train daily. And how is the parking, is that parking lot used now? Do Avon employees use it? Does anyone use it? Does anyone know?
Currently, they don't, they don't use the parking lot, it's just usually used for special events here in the Village.
Okay.
And if they need, if they have any event at Avon.
Okay, so right now, even though you cite a need for parking, no one seems to go there as an overflow, instead of, I mean, you're saying it's not utilized now, even though it's a beautifully open vacant space?
We cannot utilize it.
Do they use it? The seniors use it?
It's private property, so we're not able to utilize it? When we do, we seek permission and provide insurance requirements for it?
Because there's no signs restricting it.
Okay.
Okay, so, okay, that's just one thing. I want to second Jack's concerns about the possible environmental toxicity in the building, and have we built in anything to have the Village, hold the Village harmless, should, you know, chemicals be found there? Now, what guarantees do we have that we're not going to buy something that then can't be used? Does anyone, you know, has that been, perhaps that has been attended to?
Yes, Mr. Willis will speak to those points.
Certainly, there are some things I can't speak completely to answer your question because the contract is, they're still confidential, it's not being fully negotiated with respect to all the issues, but certainly that is an issue that the Village is, as resolution number five, is to have an environmental due diligence inspection occur of the property, so the Village can get an understanding of the conditions in the past use of the property. And also, the allocation of responsibility, allocation of that risk, is an issue for discussion with Avon as part of the contract negotiation. So the Village is mindful of it, but we've not reached a conclusion as regards that particular issue.
And have you decided who's going to pay for this environmental study?
Yes, that is typically in a commercial setting, it's always the purchaser's obligation. The purchaser wants to pay for it because they want control, they want to determine where they're going to do the examination, they want their consultant doing the work so that that consulting company is responding to the person that hires it, rather than someone that Avon hires.
Do we have an estimate of the cost, approximately?
We do, so for the Phase One study, I believe the proposal was in the agenda packet, it's approximately $3,800 to have the Phase One study. The Phase One is an examination of the historical uses of the property, as well as a review of documents and papers on file, and then the Phase One study then recommends what additional examination, if any, would be required of the subsurface conditions of the property. That cost is not yet known, but typically it's in the neighborhood from $15,000, it could be $50,000 if you're doing a lot of sampling. This is a property that is fairly well-defined with respect to its past uses, so I think it's not an upwardly large number.
So the Village will take that?
Yeah.
Okay, so that answers that, but the total amount is, or the, is still sort of a question, it's not, it's unknown at this point, and the Village is taking on that risk, so that's, you know, another consideration. Yeah, who's paying for the environment? Okay, the other thing that piqued my interest was the fact that what was mentioned was that there were other offers that came to Avon for purchase, so why didn't they sell it? I guess that's the question.
Well, it was through a series of negotiations with Avon that we were able to reach a deal. I'd like to think our offer and our use was better and more attractive in fitting the global scheme, but Avon did have another offer on the table, but they had to get approval from the Village to modify the pilot agreement, and there were another issues, and we were able to negotiate a deal with Avon.
So that means no one ever considered the idea of eminent domain instead? So, that means no one ever considered the idea of eminent domain instead to get a better deal for us? I mean, I just raised the question.
Yeah, the answer was discussed and was not need to be more attractive.
Yeah, I mean, I realize that's an adversarial process, but, okay. And then my final question or concern really is that the term or the phrase economic development, and I guess it sounds like the plan is just to keep the parking lot and sell, hopefully sell the building. Has the village, have we, you know, before we commit ourselves to $3 million, have you had an independent business plan or, you know, someone coming in and looking at the actual realities of what is, what's happening economically now? Because, you know, what's happened at the Novartis site, I guess has turned out to be a disappointment for us or maybe in the long term. So, I mean, are we, the phrase economic development is certainly very attractive, but I'm concerned that we not become an investor, the village not becoming an investor, that's hoping that they can flip a property for greater profit without something more significant to hang our hats on. Thank you.
Michael Curley, 84 on Javenu. I've been coming to meetings for 25, 30 years. I've never seen a limitation on time, number one. And two, since you didn't adopt a hearing to have a board vote and you didn't vote for it, that rule can't stand. So, I'm going to talk for more than four minutes, okay? For the reason to educate the people, to talk about these different properties, okay? And if I may start with you, Steve, and you Paul. When you ran last year on your agenda and everything, you talked about transparency, about one of your main things you were going to do, okay? This has been, the representatives of Avon who are sitting over here went to the IAD, the county agency, back in June to talk to them about a deal, okay? Since then, the county agi, I went back and read the minutes, okay? Since then, the county agency has said that, okay, we'll let you go ahead and we approve this if you get from everyone else. That means the school district, the village of Suffolk, and the town, okay? Now, back to the transparency, because there's been months of meetings and not once before October 29th, which is about nine days ago, around there somewhere or less, seven days, has Avon ever been on an agenda in this village of Suffolk, okay? You have an obligation for transparency. This is a $3 million purchase, okay? I will also bring up an important fact here. They've talked about in the paper, and you've talked about how long you've been talking about it for. It's not on any of your agendas. I went back to May, okay? So, that brings it back to April. Nothing, not once. So, who are you people to keep this away from the people of this village? I don't think you have that right, number one. Number two, okay? The, Avon put in this pilot in 2003. Jack Man was there, you know, at the, I was here at the time too. Village residents were, we were afraid. We were scared. We were scared because, I'm not saying they said it, but they may leave, they may go. The big company who was keeping Suffolk alive may run. Well, now Avon is selling. And because Avon is selling now, they want to go and get as much capital as they can before they leave. So, to do that, they have to break this pilot agreement. If they break this pilot agreement, Suffolk gets a fair amount of money, hundreds of thousands of dollars if they break it. So, if they sell it to someone else, we get hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, I say back to Avon, if you sell it, go sell it. Give us our hundreds of thousands of dollars. We can then go pick a little piece with that money. We can fix up the parking lot across from the post office, okay? There, I have other ideas too, but I'm not going to keep going on that one, okay? So, you should not have executive, this is not an executive session issue buying a building. What is executive session may be a negotiation of the price, but you have no right to hold us back from the people. Now, we talk about the referendum. The mayor says that people can go out and get 20% of the signatures. That's only one way to do it. You can vote for a referendum. You can let the people decide in this village if they want to spend $3 million. It's not just the one way. You can put that in your vote now. That's the law. That's not my opinion, all right? So, I, if you go ahead and vote tonight, which I think is way too early, okay? Being you only gave the people seven, eight days for a $3 million purchase, something you're working on for months, is disgraceful, all right? And you should fix it. So, there's that big fear that certain people may buy it, that the Irish might buy it, okay? But let me explain the key to all this, all right? The whole central business zone is zoned for worship. The whole thing is zoned for worship. So, they can do it anywhere they want. Anyone could. The Irish could do it there. Chick-fil-A could do a Chick-fil-A and in the back of Chick-fil-A, they could do a slaughterhouse. And I'll tell you why they can do that now. Because of the coffee shop that went in, we gave the manufacturing. We gave the manufacturing. So, manufacturing is not allowed in the central business zone. What we need is not to buy property, but do a comprehensive study of the village and do the zoning. The actual map that is out there right now in the book that the public can buy or lawyers have, has a different zoning than what the village claims now. There were two zoning. There was light industrial and there was central business. If you look on the one map, it says central business. Now, they come to realize, no, we got, we might have the wrong map here. This just came to me. And I compliment the building department for figuring that out. But we gotta, we have some questions here. We have some legal questions here and I think we need to figure them out first before we vote. Okay, now we talk about CECA, okay? CECA is the State Environment Quality Review Act. Whenever you do something, you do a form, okay? So, we did what they call a short form under CECA, okay? Now, if the village is talking to anyone else about buying this or they know there's a different use, our CECA form is illegal right now. It's no good. I hear rumors. I hear different rumors. And you know what? If those rumors are true, do not vote for this. We will owe millions of dollars to people, okay? Now, let's talk about the bond. If the bond, okay, that we put in for was not told, was not, we did not tell the bond council that we had intentions of selling this property soon, we are misleading bond council and it's an illegal bond and it's a criminal act. We've heard of a supervisor who did criminal acts with bonds. I beg you not to perform a criminal act. And if the lawyer can help, I'm not saying the lawyer's involved. The lawyer may not know. You may not know there's other people who may want to buy this, okay? I'm making a choice to save this village from a major lawsuit because I think there's things going on that don't make sense and I'm not going to allow it because it should have been more open and more public, all right? The only way you control anything is with proper zoning and enforcement of zoning. And unless we do that, we shall fail. We will follow in the same footsteps as other villages and towns around us, okay? I'm sorry for taking so much time here. I've got a little more notes, okay? And there's a lot of information, okay? Now, I don't know if we told, well, if bond council don't know it, I advise you to advise bond council with thinking about doing that. It may change, I don't know everything about bonds. It may change what kind of bond you do and how you do it, okay? But it's no different than what some famous guy did, all right? We're misrepresenting, there are investors when you do a bond. It's not just something that comes from the sky. You're telling these investors you're doing a certain thing. If you're doing something else, you're committing a crime. And we don't need to do that because we haven't done anything yet, okay? And I challenge the lawyers to challenge me. That's why we need to go further. I challenge them because I feel comfortable, I feel very comfortable in the statements I'm making. I went and sat in the whole month of Chris St. Lawrence trial at my own time, my own cost, because I wanted to know history. I wanted to know what was going on. So, I understand a little bit about it, okay? Now, now, if we go for this, and let's say we don't get all this, this nice, and I don't know you, so I'm not doing this personally to you again, sir, all right? And we get this nice $63,000, he says we're going to get, we're not going to get $63,000. We're not going to get $63,000. It ain't going to happen, okay? Because, because he's giving you the best, they're giving you the best, I thank you for the question. They're giving you the best possible numbers, okay? Right now, if you vote for this, you're putting a 2% tax increase on every resident for 20 years, if it's a 20-year bond, okay? That's simple arithmetic. Matter of fact, it could be even a little more. I'm doing it based on an amortization schedule where a bond is usually paid twice a year, all right? Something else I learned from the Chris St. Lawrence trial, okay? So, you take that property now. You say we got 100 spots. You want to sell off the other piece of the property, okay? Well, they need parking. Where are they going to go? You have 33,000 spots here. I think per thousand, you need three, all right? Or per 3,000, I mean, it doesn't work. Formally, it doesn't work, all right? You'd have to knock down the building. You'd have to knock down the building and make parking, all right? And then settle it that way, okay? This village is not ready. We just, we, and I'm not blaming no one here. I know who did what. This village isn't ready for this. We just approved a building on Wayne Avenue. We gave them eight offices, eight offices. It was a little warehouse. Gave them eight offices and we assigned them seven parking spots for eight offices. Now, no, I'm not the best kid at that, you know what I mean? But I would think for eight offices, you'd need more than seven parking spots, wouldn't you? You got to figure at least two, three people in an office. You got to figure people coming to see them. So, it's probably 40 spots. So, now, we're going to, we just gave a 40-spot, mistake was just made recently in my opinion. But I think it was made because we're not communicating properly. We're not talking enough, okay? I'm a retired fireman from the city also. After 9/11, we went and we did, we did a thing so everybody could talk to each other and communicate to each other, all right? Now, I have another thought. If Avon has this big prop, big price for the building, why don't we say, okay, let them, let them sell it. Give us the difference. We'll sign off. Give us the difference on the high price and that difference and we get that money and we'll sign off. But don't think the school, now, the school district hasn't signed off on this either yet, as far as I know. You would know that better than me, right?
Correct, that's the next step.
Right. The school district hasn't even signed off, okay? So, they're going to say, hey, what are we getting now, okay? So, not only, at the end of five years, we are not only losing our, all our village taxes, right, on that piece, we're also losing all of our school taxes on that piece and we're also losing all of our county and town taxes on that piece. So, it's not just the one. And I'm telling you as I stand here, the school district ain't going to say, oh, thank you for coming by and signed a piece of paper. The school district remembers when we took the $65,000 from the Sheldon away from there. They're going to want $65,000 back. So, that'll come to about another .65 taxes we have to pay. Well, that'll cover his $63,000. We'll still have the 2%. Then we got the, I can wait to public, I can wait to the general session or I can finish this, there's a little off it. Then we have the Criminal Justice Act, which is mandated by the state of New York, which is going to cost us anywhere from 50 to 200,000. That's a half percent to 2%. Ramapo was only advocated about a billion dollars, so did Clarkson and so did the county. What I'm saying it to is we're going to hit with a burden here. We're telling, these taxpayers in this village have paid umpteen amount of taxes. I'm not blaming anyone, but I'm blaming you now if you do it more to them, all right? Until you get a grasp and a hold of your planning and zoning and everything else and everyone communicate, you're wasting our time. You're hurting this village and you're costing these taxpayers. As you can see, I have the pilot agreement, okay? And in the pilot agreement, it spells out that they have to pay us money if they cancel. So, if they cancel, we get a ton of money, okay? So, maybe we take that money and use it. And what I do, I would do a comprehensive, comprehensive village plan so we get our building correct, okay? Right what you're there. I already told you, bond, the bond is a misrepresentation. Do not file this bond. You want to correct it, you want to whatever, do not file this bond. It's criminal because we're doing something else with the property. It's not what it says here, okay? Go ahead and try to sell you that. I'm assuming he didn't know. I'm assuming you didn't know. I'm going to take you, you know, because anyone that would advise you to go ahead and do this and know, then they shouldn't be your village attorney. Okay, CECA I told you about, okay? The CECA has to do it. We have to fill out a form, okay? And under that form, there's something in the law called segmentation, okay? You're not allowed under CECA to do segmentation, all right? If you go ahead and you set, and you, and you, you file for CECA and you don't, and you don't, and if you know what you might be doing and you don't put it on there, okay? You're doing segmentation. The law is 100% against it. You cannot do it, all right? And the village has ideas what they want to do it. They know kind of what they're going to do it, okay? There's investors that want to buy it. Is there anyone in the room that kind of said they wanted to buy it? I think there is, Mr. Sickel. I think there is.
That's the one that you're applying.
Okay, good.
That's your, city board.
Well, you came around asking questions about me today, so I figured I'd just let you so. I'm here, you can always talk to me, Mr. Sickel. Okay, with, with, with the Sheldon, too, because that's part of, you brought it into the whole picture, they were supposed to park down at Boarfield with their extra spots, okay? We learned that we're not a transit-oriented village with the Sheldon, okay? The Sheldon was built and the people they thought might move in, they weren't. It wasn't the young kids running to the city, okay? It was different people. So, we went there with, and as a gentleman pointed out, it's not what we think, okay? We're not ready for more downtown development. We can't handle what we got. We don't know, we're already saying we can't give out spots. We made mistakes. We don't need to make more. And this is not the solution to those mistakes, the $3 million. I think the people have a right to be involved in this conversation. It's a bigger conversation than just this, just this piece of property, okay? And you mentioned about a parking study. I think that was John Lang's parking study, if that'd be fair to say? Okay, yeah, John Lang, John Lang was the planner for the town of Ramapo. So, if you'd like to have, would you like John Lang to do for Suffolk when he did for Ramapo? Can I think you take that? That's a good point, all right? Again, we've been burdened with big, big tax increases over the last four or five years. I'm not here to blame no one. I think it's time that we really start thinking about what we're doing and, you know, you force people out when you do that. It may not, maybe it doesn't affect you personally, it affects a lot of people. There's a lot of people, you want the young couples coming too? You can't, you can't. What's the biggest problem when a realtor sells a house in Suffolk? The taxes, huh? I'm asking you to reconsider. Thank you for your time.
Well, first of all, I'm Brian Sickel. I'm an attorney in the village that born and brought up in Suffolk. And I congratulate Mr. Man for his vote for the pilot because I was one of the two or three people, you may recall, Jack, that came in to suggest that the vote was necessary and I think you did the right thing. So, congratulations on that. To the nice lady that thought that the building might be an environmental problem, that's something for the lawyers to take. You don't buy a house, you don't buy anything without having an environmental study. I'm sure that that will be overcome and resolved. I really can't think of a merchant or a business in the village of Suffolk, with the exception of the gentleman who spoke perhaps, that would be opposed to something that would drive this type of economic development in the village. My understanding is that the village had a study done and the West Point systems and it confirmed the need for parking in order to keep the economic engine going. And to me, this is your opportunity to act on that very sound recommendation. There are a lot of benefits to the property. I have no intention of buying the property. I don't know where that came from, absolutely none. But it certainly has commercial, residential, municipal value. They're not making property anymore. As far as the pilot's concerned, certainly if Avon were to sell it to someone else, they'd owe the village money and others. The value of that money couldn't possibly offset, in my view, the loss of the value of this piece of property to the village in the long run. It couldn't possibly offset it. It's very short-term thinking to think you're going to pave a parking It's very short-term thinking to think you're gonna pave a parking lot and lose almost two acres of property, prime property, in the village. If it's not acquired now, the village largely loses control of a principal piece of bill—of a property in the village that has long-term potential, long beyond when this whole group of people that we have before us are here. It'll go on forever. It's the last piece of property that can be acquired of this size in the village. It has some economic benefit. Land isn't being made anymore. And this is your opportunity to do the right thing for the village. Don't let the opportunity slip you by. Thank you.
Jim Janatino, Two Memorial, for the attorney. Do you have any answers to what my good friend had to say about loss of the pilot for these other parties? They guaranteed it for the next five years, aren't they?
Correct.
Okay. He—he made it sound like they were gonna lose their pilot money.
No, they’re—
If they were, they would never sign on to it. If they're gonna get it, they'll sign on to it.
Correct.
That's all I have to say.
Good evening. Dagan LaCourte, Burlington Avenue. Been a while since I've been up here. I do want to congratulate the two trustees up there, Mr. Hagan and Ms. Hertzman, for your service to the village. It's greatly appreciated, and to congratulate the incoming trustees. I think, you know, I've been here listening, and, you know, I—I understand people's concerns about the village acquiring and making a financial commitment of this size. And—and again, it's—I'm—I'm not one who typically is a proponent of of villages and municipalities getting in the business of buying property. But as the speaker right before me said, is, look, this is a two-acre parcel of property in the heart of the downtown. That this is something that doesn't come up for sale very often. And despite what an earlier speaker said, you know, maybe saying that the Sheldon is not a success, or that a—a new business that just opened up downtown is doing something that, you know, is previously not being permitted, although I know there's other manufacturing that goes on in this village, these things are successes. The Sheldon is—is, I believe, ninety percent occupied in under six months. There are new businesses opening up downtown, and I think things are moving forward in—in the right direction. It's something that's been going on for a while, and has been going on of boards of both Republicans and Democrats. And I think that, you know, you have to be bold in certain situations. The future is uncertain. We don't know everything's about—it's gonna happen, but I know that things that right now, like a—like a ninety-unit development next to the train station, when I was up there ten years ago talking about it, people thought it was crazy. Who's gonna wanna live near a train station? And I don't know everyone who lives there. I know that it's occupied. You know, a speaker spoke about saying it's not people who are using mass transit. I don't know where that person gets that information. I mean, I don't think it's legal to ask somebody what their age is or what they do. I just know that the building is occupied, and they're getting very good rents that people thought wasn't gonna happen. People were talking about Section Eight housing. It's good—they're getting rents north of two thousand dollars, and the building is pretty much rented up. And there are new faces coming into town, and people frequenting downtown businesses. And I think that if you look back, I remember years ago, Clarkstown had had the ability to build a golf course at the site that's now Patrick Farm. And the golf course was turned down, and look what's gone on since then. And, you know, the village, I think, if they acquire this property, will have the ability to plan something that will be of the best use. It may involve the building coming down. If—if you ask me, just looking at it, it probably does. You go down to Montclair. Montclair built a building right in their downtown. That was something which we had looked at when we had talked about initially the Sheldon as an example, and what's gone on in Montclair. And right next to that, they worked with the municipality in building a garage. So the garage was able to provide parking for the building, and also parking for people who'd come in the downtown. I know also someone had said how people—I—I—it's not gonna free up people from the Sheldon by parking there. It doesn't mean that the people of the Sheldon are gonna park there. It just means it'll provide more parking for the village, and then the village can kind of adjust their inventory and move people around. I think things are going great in the village in the right direction. I think we can always try to focus on the negative and criticize things that aren't perfect, but I see what goes on in the downtown every day, and there are new faces down there, new business is opening up, and I think that this is bold. It has some risk, but I do believe that if the village purchases this property and takes some thought and consideration and community input, and then plans in the medium term down the road to do something here, I think it's gonna be unbelievable. And I think—I truly believe, like the speaker said to me before, if the village does not purchase this property and lets it go to whoever buys it with the expansive zoning that already exists, we're gonna be kicking ourselves for years to come. So again, I—I appreciate you taking this bold action, and I wish you the best of luck. And I'm just one resident supporting it, so thank you.
My name is Randy Ortiz. I live at Eleven Fairview Place, and I'm a business—a merchant downtown in the village since nineteen ninety-five. We definitely need more parking. Parking has always—is always been an issue. I'll definitely agree with my friend Mike over there that the B lot definitely needs some attention. There's definitely—I can agree with him on that. But acquiring, you know, the young lady over here mentioned about the use of that lot now. It's private property. Avon's been pretty—uh, it's pretty nice not doing anything with people parking there as far as towing cars out and the use of that lot. There's a lot of stuff that goes on that people park in there, and I don't know that every time they park there that they get an insurance certificate from the village. But there's definitely a lot of stuff goes on. They've been very gracious with that. And they've been a very good neighbor. You know, they've been good to—I'm a member of the fire department. They've been a good neighbor. Never refused to let us use the property for an event, that type of thing. But I'd also like this, you know, aside from the parking, I—I think that, you know, there can be a lot of creative uses for that property. And one of them that I would just like to throw out there is that—and I'm saying this as a private citizen, not a member of the fire department, which I am, okay? Because I might get some flack from some fellow firemen about this, but, you know, it would be nice to see some sort of joint fire emergency services building there. The village is currently maintaining two separate buildings for the fire department. So, you know, to be creative and look at all the possibilities, you know, there's a possibility there that you could put one building up to hu—to house both the fire departments, and maybe another problem that we're having in the village with ambulance service, maybe that might be something that might get—to be considered there. So there's a lot of possibilities for that property, and I definitely agree that you don't wanna pass up this opportunity to make that purchase of that property. Thank you.
Hi, Ori Lacata, Ninety-Six Lafayette Avenue. As a business owner for over forty years in the village, I support your project. I can't speak for the entire Chamber of Commerce, but as president, I think you can see the new businesses that have come in and how much the chamber has supported you guys. And I hope that everything works out with the legalities and everything. And the only thing the chamber has asked me is that if we could just begin to work on a lighting project downtown. The downtown is terrific at night, but I think we need more light. Thank you.
No worry. Is there anyone—anyone else from the public that would like to come up and speak in regards to the project? Okay, I heard many concerns. I heard pros. I heard cons. But I'd like to clear up a few individual items. First of all, I'd like to thank Avon for the use over the years of allowing the village of Suffolk to use it for special events, overflow parking, and the needs that we have. Thank you. They have been a good neighbor. And to speak about transparency, these were scheduled on the agendas numerous times in September. They are contract negotiations. We need these properties, this property here, for additional parking and to spur economic development, as we spoke about. It also allows for us to reallocate parking throughout the village. Everyone knows that we do have a parking concern here in the village for residential parking, overnight parking, and merchant parking. And the more parking that we have spurs further economic development and allows for use of stores, storefronts on Lafayette Avenue by the general public, being able to come up and park on Lafayette Avenue and go shopping and go dining, instead of trying to strategize where to park their car, because everybody is pushing their cars out in the street when there's no parking available in the lots. We are a community here in the village of Suffolk that welcomes everyone, and we don't alienate anyone in our statements. So to try to alienate people here in the village of Suffolk is something that is not acceptable. And going one step further in regards to the bond resolution as the statements were made, there was a misrepresentation. There was no misrepresentation to bond council in regards to the acquisition of the property. The bond council was made aware of the potential of subdividing the property. Those are some of the outstanding comments. I thank everyone for their comments. And it seems that it will generate economic development and will be a benefit to the village of Suffolk and is a once-in-a op—a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Those are my statements from here. I would like to invite anybody else up to speak once again, if they have any other concerns.
May I just speak from here? Um, no. Okay. The fact that the village—
I'm—I'm—I'm sorry. Hold on, Ms. Nordhouser, if we can't hear you, but I can repeat your question if you would like to stand there.
Two times in one month. Well, um, I'm just raising the issue of the fact that, you know, very soon there will be a turnover in the composition of the board and the government of the village. And, you know, I'm just wondering whether that should not be taken into consideration in terms of—we don't know the position of the incoming trustees. And I would just ask that you, you know, take that into consideration. Perhaps it's not the best move. Perhaps this should wait until the new—new trustees are sworn in.
Okay.
I—I just wanna—because I was brought up as people talked about me, okay? I respect Mr. Sickel, but Mr. Sickel himself is looking for a zone change. He's—he's approached the village to get a zone change on property of his own, which he has a right to do that. So Mr. Sickel is also—matter of fact, for years, you've approached the village for—maybe back as far as ten years—approached to put a zone change by the church for about a hundred and something condos or co—of something of that nature, okay? So whether you were looking to—if—I—if I misspoke that you're not actually buying that property, okay? There is an agenda for people here, okay? There is an agenda, and it's to look out for the village, okay? I know you live over in Montevella in Florida most of the time, okay? And, uh, but—but—but there is—there is a—a financial gain here somewhere, all right? Right? I—I'm just old-fashioned, looking out for things, right? And I understand Mr. LaCourte came here and talked about how I see things and whatnot, okay? Well, he's also looking for a zone change, too, next to the coffee machine, trying to put a—
Excuse me, Mr. Curly. Please address the board.
Okay, good. I—I will, Miss, all right?
Thank you.
As you well know, he's also looking for a zone change. And if I'm incorrect on anything, or—or he's approached you, and Mr. Sickel's approached you, we both know that. We all know that, all right? Matter of fact, maybe he even approached you to buy some of that—I don't—or—or to switch the firehouse over. Because then I heard someone talking about a firehouse switch. So there's something going on here that's not in those papers, and that's why I'm telling you we're misleading the bond council, and that's why I'm telling you we're misleading—we're definitely misleading SECA. We're not—we're not being—we're not being honest on it, okay? And you can't—and you can't do a—and I don't—I—and maybe—it—maybe I'm just educating you to it. Maybe you're not. Maybe it's no about anyone—no one being dishonest, because I don't wanna accuse anyone to be dishonest, but maybe you just don't know. I would go back and look. I would not vote on this tonight, for sure, if that SECA is wrong, all right? And again, uh, and again, and—and—and as far as the Sheldon goes, I think the Sheldon's a great thing for Suffolk. When the Sheldon was for sale, Josh Goldstein, the owner, called me up. He said, "Mr. Curly, I need help. Can you—oh, I'm sorry. Let me turn this way." I said—I said that Mr.—Mr. Goldstein called me up. Never knew the guy, never met him. He said, "Mike, I'm having problems getting this building." So I met with the building owner, who had a similar building to me, and I actually helped him get the property. So I'm for the Sheldon. I'm for the concept of it. What I said was, with the Sheldon, we didn't allocate enough parking. We made mistakes, and that's why I think we—we need a comprehensive review. They—and that's—that's where that—we're—that's where that—we're that back. So I don't—I—I'm for the Sheldon. I'm for the coffee shop, okay? I'm not for putting high-densing housing in when there's no parking. And you talked about a hundred parking spots we'll get, okay? If—you're not gonna have them for everyone else. There's not gonna be enough for this transit—for this development thing. There's gonna be no—you—you're gonna need it for the businesses, if that's what you're claiming. So you can't even do everything you showed on that nice—on the nice slideshow there. It ain't gonna be—it ain't gonna make the difference. So just as long as you know how much you're paying per spot. That's all, okay? That's all. Because you're paying a lot—you're paying a lot per spot, okay? For spots that are tougher to get at. Now, what I don't wanna see happen is that development goes on in different spots, and then they trade off the post office spots and say, "Well, we got the parking up there." So people have to walk further. I'm not looking for that. See, none of these—so let—let me just show my unselfish—none of these affect me. I'm further down. They don't really affect me. But even then, Mr. LaCourte wanted to talk. Look at his lot. He bought the property. They roped it off. In thirty years, I've never roped off my property, and nor have ever towed anyone. Well, now the people that are buying property are roping and towing around, towing people and roping off. Well, I don't believe in that as a neighbor. Never done it and won't do it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come back up and speak? Okay, just once again, I'd like to be clear that if we do proceed with this—the resolutions this evening, they are specifically for a municipal use. And once again, parking sprawl is impacting the entire village, no way—no matter where you are in the village. But the municipal use is something that we're looking at, and it's an opportunity that presents itself now. Anyone else would like to say anything? Otherwise, I would like to close the public comment. Motion to close the public comment?
Public hearing.
Public hearing, excuse me?
Motion.
Motion, Trustee Hertzman. Second?
Second.
Trustee Girard, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Who's the second? I'm sorry.
This time, I'd like to make a motion to go into an executive session for legal counsel. Do I have a motion? Trustee Hagan, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Alpert, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So this time, we're gonna convene into an executive session, and we will return into the regular meeting to render a possible decision on moving forward. Thank you for bearing with us while we were in executive session. There was a lot of discussion that went on, and Mr. Nick Ward-Willis, if you may, give a overview of how we are going to proceed and—
Yes, certainly, Mr. Mayor. So the, um, the board needs to consider the five resolutions that were—thank you. I can always hear myself. It's good to know you can't hear me. Thank you for the reminder. So the board has the five resolutions in front of it tonight concerning the property purchase that need to be voted on in the order in which they're presented. I did want to provide to the board and the public just a general response to the questions about the process. There was concern about meetings and not being, this process coming forward later. Well, the open meetings law actually provides that topics of purchase of real property are to be held in an executive session. You don't do your negotiations in public when you're buying a property. And that's why it's been put on tonight's agenda, on last week's agenda, so the public was aware of it. Additionally, the public hearing the board scheduled is unprecedented. It's not required by law to have a public hearing when a municipality is purchasing property. With respect to the concerns about SECA and segmentation, I think if people had listened tonight, you heard that there were a variety of general municipal uses proposed for this property. SECA requires that you evaluate an action. There clearly is no action other than the purchase and the bonding. There's no other potential use of a property other than parking, which is what it's currently done for. We're not proposing to tear the building down or put something new up there, or put a firehouse on there. There were a number of different proposals, so there's no, I understand the comment about the SECA segmentation, it does not exist in this, in this situation. And there was also a question regarding the general municipal purposes. We've spoken with bond council. Bond council is fully aware of all the potential uses, and there were discussions tonight talking about what all those potential uses are. This property is clearly being purchased and acquired for general municipal purposes, and we've heard, had discussions tonight about what those are. So the next step is for the board to consider the five resolutions that it has before, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So the first resolution I have before me is adopting a negative declaration in connection with the village of Suffolk proposed action to purchase a fossil of real estate and issue bonds to finance the purchase. So I have the resolution in front of me, once again, adopting a negative declaration in connection with the village of Suffolk proposed action to purchase a fossil of real property and issue bonds in the aggregated principal amount of $3 million to finance the purchase. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hertzman, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next I have on the agenda, a resolution establishing Capital Project 2020-007, acquisition of Avon Properties. Now therefore be resolved, the village of Suffolk Board of Trustees hereby establishes a Capital Project 2020-007. 2020 acquisition of Avon Properties as follows. Appropriations of $3 million, estimated revenue of debt, $3 million. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Girard, second.
Second.
Trustee Hagan, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.